Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education Finance and Audit Committee meeting. This is January 22nd, 2020. We are holding this meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Miguel Del Valle. On behalf of my fellow board members, I thank you for coming today. I want to note that future Finance and Audit Committee meetings will be chaired by Vice President Rivaluri, which I will talk about more at the board meeting later. The order of today's meeting will include financial update, audit update, public participation, and adjournment. Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to the Martin Luther King Holiday Notice of the Meeting was posted on Friday, January 17th, 2020, at least 48 hours before this meeting at Board Room, Principal Office, 42 West Madison Lobby, and on cpsboe.org. Thank you.
The Finance and Audit Committee meeting of Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Truss?
Here.
Member Ted Breland?
Here.
Vice President Rivaluri?
Here.
Member Melendez?
Here.
Member Rome?
Here.
And President Del Valle?
Here.
We have six members present. We have a quorum. I would also like to recognize Dr. Janice Jackson, our CEO, and Joseph Moriarty, our General Counsel. Thank you.
Let's begin with the Finance and Audit presentation. Lenny Moore, Walter Stock, and Hellicott Jacob will be presenting.
Hi, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I am Wally Stock, the District Treasurer, and I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about our current cash and short-term borrowing position before we get into the presentation on the CAFER. So, we had a good year. We're going to find out in a few minutes here when we go through the audit. And we had an overperformance of $147 million by accounting terms. So, we're soon going to be looking at a general fund balance of $471 million, which is a significant improvement of where we've been at in prior years. But I wanted to feel it's important to point out that we still ended the year with a net negative cash balance of $115 million. So, this is based on our short-term borrowing. We had $450 million in TANs owed and a $335 million actual operating fund account balance. So, when we were at the last Audit and Finance Committee meeting, we talked about that number. And now we've been through the CAFER cycle, and that number is validated in those financials. Furthermore, our cash position is always evolving, and I am telling you that by the end of February, coming up here in 30 days, our negative cash position will be $800 million negative. So, we will have a significant amount of TANs outstanding at that time. We have a debt service deposit coming up in February, and that will be the main reason that we are driving our cash negative at that point. This slide is a depiction of our cash position back from 2014. We've talked about this slide before. And back in '14, we had a billion-dollar cash position, and we never went negative. But lack of revenue increases to keep pace with the expenditures slowly drove it negative, and you can see where we're at now. So, we're spending part of the year negative and part of the year positive, and we still have a ways to go. We still have to borrow these TANs because we don't have a large enough cash position. So, with that in mind, I think it's something that I haven't talked about with the board before, but I wanted to touch upon why the fund balance is positive and our net cash position is negative. So, the fund balance is an accounting term from our audit. It comes from the statement of revenues and expenditures, and it takes into account, really, short-term operating performance. You know, said another way, in order to look at this fund balance, get this number, we look at the revenues taken in, less the expenses taken out, and that difference then is added to the prior year results. So, it's certainly a way to make a financial measurement and understand if in that current year we took in more than we spent. But there's a lot of other considerations to understand financial health of an organization. It's not really the only thing that should be considered because the audit is, it's a 300-page document with a lot of statistics and numbers in it. One thing that is the most significant factor to contributing to this difference is something called the Revenue Recognition Concept. And it's not any, it's an accounting concept. It's not anything different than any other Cook County government is doing. We receive our property taxes two times in a year. We get a bulk of them in March. We get another bulk in August, and that August time period is after our fiscal year end on June 30th. So, we look out 60 days beyond the end of our fiscal year, and we count those revenues in the fiscal year that just ended. That's because that was the year they were intended primarily to be spent. But what it had the effect of doing is back in 2015, when we changed from a 30-day to a 60-day policy, it basically pumped up the fund balance by $648 million. So, you know, currently, in fiscal year '20, that's about $1.2 billion that we took in beyond the end of the fiscal year. So, if we think in terms of that fund balance that we're going to be talking about, we see the financial results at $471 million, and we took away that $1.2 billion, we'd start to have more connection with the net negative cash position. So, if you can think about that and kind of understand that, you can kind of hopefully think or understand why I think that net negative cash position is so important to not forget about. So, this is another page. I think we've seen this before. You know, again, in the fiscal '17, '18, we had a lot of negative territory there. We're seeing a solid line, which is a zero position, and then we're seeing our truly cash positions there in a gold line being majority of the time in '17 and '18 below zero. We're also seeing the blue line, which is effectively the borrowing that we took out. So, anytime that the gold line is below zero, we've always had TANs outstanding. In fiscal year '19, we finally, when we got education funding reform, pension relief, we started to get those peaks well above the zero line. But now, in fiscal year '20, we're sort of in a kind of a holding pattern in a way, kind of not much different in '20 versus FY '19. I mean, it's true, when you go back, and you can see that we've cut the amount of short-term borrowing in half, but we're really going to need to do some additional considerations and think about our spending in terms of the revenues that we have on the table in order to totally eliminate TANs. So, I mean, we're always going to have peaks and valleys, but the goal is really to have solid gold, you know, with peaks above a zero. This is just a short page on the TAN program for this year. Again, it's a very similar structure style to what we did last year. We authorized $1.25 billion back in August. The blue shaded cells are what we've executed on already, so we've already completed $400 million in borrowings. And soon, by the end of January and February, we'll take on another $450 million in borrowing. So, then going back to that very first slide where I talked about the negative cash position, that'll be a result of the additional borrowings that we'll be taking on in the next 30 days or so. Everything, then we have a second installment. All those monies that we borrow in the first installment will be paid back by March 15th. We have a period where we get above zero, and then we'll start to reload again and need to borrow around the May timeframe, and those TANs would all be repaid by August And then rounding out, again, a chart that we've seen before, but I think a little bit more good news since the last time that we were before the board. I mean, we are still junk bond rated on our general obligation bonds. There is a green line that you can see in that chart, and that's kind of the investment grade territory. The red is our general obligation bonds, and the blues are the low lows that we had experienced in the periods of financial turmoil. So, most recently, in the August timeframe, we received upgrades from Standard and Poor's and Fitch. Recently, in December, we received an upgrade from Moody's, but these were just like one notch upgrades. Our ratings on our capital improvement tax bonds are in yellow. Kroll currently has those ratings both at investment grade, but I think a lot of the market participants focus on the Standard and Poor's, Moody's, Fitch ratings, and since those are below investment grade, there's really, you know, a considerable amount of more work that we need to do. I'm hopeful that with the results of the audit, that our controllers are about ready to explain that we'll be able to go back to the rating agencies and make an argument for a further upgrade, but they definitely took us down below investment grade a lot quicker than it's going to take us to get back up. So, we're going to need a few more years probably of financial performance before we're back in that investment grade territory very solidly. And that's the conclusion of my presentation, so I don't know if there's any questions that anybody has.
Any questions or comments? About one question.
I'm sorry. Thank you. That was really helpful. You've explained this to us several times, and I'm getting more and more of it. I know it depends on a lot on the expenditure side as well, but on your Slide 4, where you were showing the cash borrowing picture year over year, what does, what do you think it currently is projected or estimated to be for the next fiscal year, for fiscal '21?
Well, if we balance the budget neutral, we would probably be in a similar period. I think that it was really when we saw the state funding formula that brought in, and the pension that brought in the $900 million of revenue, that that was really when we were really able to cut the program in half. So, if we're just at a period where we're budgeting to break even, there will potentially be a little hopeful outperformance on that, but we're not going to see the great reduction in TANs until we see multiple years of minor outperformance. So, I expect that we would probably be back to the board in a conservative standpoint and want to authorize a similar amount of TANs. As we work through the budget and we understand what all those numbers are, and we start to put those in our cash flow model, we can hopefully try to outperform and beat that. But at this point, I just, I can't confidently tell you that we're going to dramatically reduce what it is that we're doing without making changes.
Right. So, the base case in a balanced budget without a very different revenue picture would be sort of, will be a copy of fiscal '20.
Right.
Which was a copy of fiscal '19.
Right. And that's kind of what I was pointing out, like '21 exactly could be the same thing, but you're seeing '19 and '20, very similar kind of structure in the borrowing, and '21 likely would be similar as well until we see changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
But because we aren't at this point predicting another significant infusion of dollars.
Yes.
The way we did when we got the $900 million.
Yes.
You're saying that we can maintain the level we're at now.
We can certainly maintain the level that we're at now. We'll just need to, you know, there's definitely, there's a lot of moving parts to borrowing.
So, our ratings are not going to go backwards again?
I wouldn't think that they would go backwards, but there's certain, I mean, we have a case, I think, with this year's FY '19 performance to argue that we could, we should be like one notch upgrades, that I don't hold the cards to that, but I will push very hard. But beyond that, you know, they're going to want to see more.
They're going to see progress.
More improvement, more progress.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board.
Good morning.
So, it's my job, my name is Lenny Moore. I'm the Controller, and I'm joined today by David Paul. He's our Deputy Controller, and Dongmei Li, our Assistant Controller, and our Audit Partner, Jason Cole, who's, there he is. So, we've got enough people to answer any questions you might have. So, today, what I want to do is present the results of our audit of our annual financial statements and our Federal Single Audit Act grant programs. And I also want to give you some highlights from our financial statements. So, our annual audit consists of auditing our annual financial statement, which we commonly refer to as our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And it also consists of auditing our Schedule Expenditures of Federal Awards, which we call our CIFA. And that's where we track all the expenditures that we have under our federal awards that we've received, whether directly or through the state. And then finally, we also do an annual financial report for the Illinois State Board of Education, and so the auditors will review that. So, when we look at the results of those audit, you'll see on Slide 5, let me switch the button here. So, when you look at the results of our annual audit, you'll see that once again, we had no major material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies over our controls over financial reporting as it relates to the annual financial report. And also, as it relates to the audit of our CIFA and our grant programs, there were no material weaknesses or no significant deficiencies in general. However, there was a, for one of the grant programs, the auditors did notice deficiency in our procurement policy, which the procurement department is working on. In terms of how our financial statements are overall, the auditors are giving us unmodified opinion. That means that our statements present fairly the financial position of the district as of June 30th, 2019, and it presents fairly the changes in our financial position over that period of FY '19. And the same thing for our Schedule Expenditures of Federal Awards. The auditors have an unmodified opinion on that, which means that that schedule fairly presents the expenditures we incurred under those programs for FY '19. So, now I'd like to turn to give you some highlights of our financial statements and the results of our operations for FY '19. So, I'll start with the income statement, though normally you look at financial statements, it starts with the balance sheet. But I guess the good stuff is in the income statement, so I'll start with the income statement first. So, just focusing first on our General Operating Fund, which is the main fund that most people talk about. If you notice from the revenue perspective, our revenues increased from FY '18. They increased by $180 million. So, it's always good when your revenues are going up, and the primary components of that increase, our property taxes, because that's our primary revenue source, and then our federal and state aid. If we look at our Debt Service Fund, we'll see some changes in that, and this is related to a one-time revenue sources, which we're calling other financing sources. So, you notice that a 200, can you see me? Looking at our Debt Service Fund, you'll see, I'm on Bullet Number 3, you'll see that $286 million decrease transfer from the Debt Service Fund, and that really is a one-time is mainly caused due to financing activities. So, part of what Walter was talking to you about earlier affects those transfers between the Operating Fund and the Debt Service Fund. And so, it's not really a result of anything that happened in that particular operating period. It's really a result of financing activity. So, if we switch to the next slide, and we look at expenditures, we'll find we had an increase in revenues, but we also had an increase of expenditures of 6.3% that first bullet, or $345 million. But we also had something that's good. We had an increase in capital project activity. So, if you notice that expenditures went up by $274 million. And really, the year before, we had got the proceeds in, and in FY '19, we started spending them. So, you'll see later on, I'll show you, there's a drop in the fund balance for the Capital Project Fund, but that's really just, again, owed to the timing of when we issue debt, when we spend it. And so, you may issue, you may get the proceeds in one year, you may start spending them in another year, you know, the timing of when the project gets finally started. So, it's really not a result of any particular year, is you have to look at it over the period which they planned it. So, I talked a little bit about revenues going up, expenditures going up. Overall, when we look at the results of that activity, revenues exceeded expenditures for the year. So, in FY '19, you'll see from the first bullet that revenue slightly exceeded expenditures by about $148 million, and that's a good indication. So, that's an indication that we're adhering to our budget, that indication that our Budget Department did a good job with the revenue estimates, and expenditures were kept in line with what the budget was. You will notice that there's a, when you look at the change last year, we had like almost a $600 million change in our net position in FY '18. We have $148 million this year. That really, the good part of that is owed to that one-time financing activity of $286 million that I alluded to earlier, and the balance of that is just because of increased And then, if you look at our Capital Projects Funds, that's what I was talking about earlier, where expenditures increased by $274 million in FY '19 over FY '18, whereas a lot of the proceeds that was issued that's being spent in FY '19 was issued in prior years. So, that's why you see the negative change in fund balance for the Capital Project Fund. So, that's not necessarily a bad thing, it's just the timing of when proceeds were made available and when the expenditures actually occurred. So, now if we take a look at, from, now we're shifting from looking at our income statement, which is looking at our general operating results and our revenues and expenditures, and start looking at just our balance sheet, and if we start with our fund balance sheet, we look at our fund balance, we'll see that we had an increase in fund balance, which corresponds with $148 million revenues exceeding expenditures. So, our fund balance went from $324 million to $472 million. Now, not all of that $472 million is liquid, you know, some of it's tied up in unspendable assets, but still, it's a good thing when your fund balance increases and when your reserve increases. And I'll talk a little bit about that, some of the benefits of having higher fund balance, other than it looks good, but also, if you think about the way we get revenue, it's something that Wally talked about earlier. We, you know, get revenue, our main part of our revenue source comes twice a year. So, in between, you're getting those main infusions of cash. You've got to have cash available to support operations. And so, like Wally said, how we've been doing it is through TANs. You know, you issue TANs, and that helps support the operation in between your major revenue infusion. So, when you get to, if you look at the balance sheet, you'll see that we have, we ended the year increasing cash of about $80-something million, and so we have like $300 million in cash and investments. But to Wally's point, if you look at our tax anticipation notes, we have outstanding at the end of FY '19, $450 million. So, if you look at the difference, you get about $150 million negative. You've got $300 million in cash, but you've got these tax anticipation notes or TANs outstanding that you've got to pay of about $450 million. So, you're about $150 million to the bad than what you want to be. So, increasing that reserves help us have available cash to meet in between the times we get the cash infusion from the property tax increases and other revenue sources. But overall, our balance sheet is strong. If you look at it, our assets increased from FY '18 to FY '19 by about $100 million, and our liabilities decreased from FY '18 to FY '19 by about $50 million. So, they went from, you know, $1.58 billion to $1.53. So, overall, our financial position looks good. Our fund balance increased, our assets increased, our liabilities went down. So, the big picture there is things look good. I'm going to just brush over the last two slides because I touched on those a little bit. This is just the composition of our revenues and the fact that our revenue is slightly above. I'll touch a little bit more when I do the budgetary highlights, and the same thing about expenses. I talked a little bit about that. This is just the composition of the expenses, and you get a lot of that when they have the budget discussion, so you'll get your ears full about the composition of our main revenue sources and our main expenditures. So, I'm focused now on something that I mentioned earlier. So, I mentioned earlier that when you look at our revenues and expenditures, a good indication that we did a good job budget-wise estimating revenues, and then we did a good job of staying to our budget when we come to spending. So, if you look at the comparison between actuals and budget, so the orange, if that's the color, is actual, and then, I'm sorry, the orange is actual, and then the aqua blue, if that's what you want to call it, is the budget amount. And so, if you just look visually, you can see that we did a good job of staying in line for what we budgeted, whether estimates, so when it comes to estimates, revenues, we were slightly above. So, we came in about $23 million more than we estimated as far as the budget, and that's on the next slide. And then, when we look at expenditures, we came in slightly below what we budgeted by $125 million. So, staying in line with budget and coming in slightly higher on revenue and slightly lower on expenditures resulted in a net positive increase in our fund balance, and it continued to have the district's financial position strong. You know, we've increased the position from last year to this year, so overall, everything's positive. We unmodified opinion, no major weaknesses, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and a strong balance sheet, or stronger balance sheet. Are there any questions for me?
On the federal spend, you indicated there were lower, less spending than expected.
On?
On the federal, federal spend.
Yeah, a lot of that is due to timing. So, if you look, for example, if you look at our receivables and increase in receivables, a good, other than property taxes, which make up the bulk of those receivables, the other part of that relates to federal aid that we expect.
Right.
So, there's, we've billed them, but by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year, so we, the expenditures were incurred, but we didn't really get the money in by the time of June 30th, 19.
So, it's about timing of reimbursement?
It's about timing. That's the short way of saying it.
Not spending.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm not saying we can't do better in that regards, but the bulk of the change you're seeing is the timing.
Okay. Thank you.
So, in terms of the long game in a sense, because, I mean, it's all tied into the, with the rating services, for instance, looking down the road, you know, because to get the better recognition from the debt, from the rating services, we got to still keep an eye on expenditures, considering that, you know, we have the cost of, you know, personnel with the contract. But down the road, with revenue, we were still, I mean, obviously, the state is not funding us to adequacy levels, but is there any potential potholes along the way, or do you see optimistically that the revenue stream will stay positive?
Well, obviously, there's, you know, the Budget Department and CEO and their activities probably could speak more to that, but looking at the actual results and then the trend of our financial statements over time, we know that our revenues are trending up, and then expenditures is just a matter of public policy. And I think that, you know, you guys and working with the CEO are trying to keep those in line, and that is what the rating agencies are looking at, as Wally alluded to. But from, looking at from just their analysis of financial statements, just based on past experience, one of the things they look for is strong reserves, because that is an indication that we're planning for, you know, because things vary from year to year. You know, you can get unexpected expenditures that can occur, and when you look at how we get our revenue, they're pretty much, the revenue is pretty much, you know, the increase is, is going to be driven by inflation and things that occur in the real estate market. So, it's, they kind of predict what's going to happen with our revenue stream, and then they look at spikes in expenditures that potentially could occur. So, when you, when your financial statements are demonstrating that you're positioned to handle the unexpected, then they have comfort that debt service will be met, no matter, you know, the fluctuations that happen in your operations. They say, well, they have sufficient liquidity that even if, you know, they should have a spike of expenditures because of unexpected events or unexpected things happening with the state revenue, that they still can afford to meet debt service, then they give you that. That confidence is what will raise the, I came from, you know, I just started working here in September, and I came from a county that was AAA rated, so they have, all rating agencies gave them a AAA rating over their debt. And the biggest difference between what we're doing here at the Chicago Public Schools and what they're doing in Montgomery County, Maryland, is reserves. We have, they have significant reserves in Montgomery County, and we experienced, it's public information, I'm not disclosing it, it's not public, we experienced a $6 million fraud by an individual, and we still maintain AAA rating because we have sufficient reserves.
So, what, I know you haven't been here too long, but what's the history of our reserve amounts over the last 10 years?
Well, I understand that someone can comment, but I understand they were negative not too long ago, so we went.
How long were they negative? Do you know, can you share that history with us?
Sure. I mean, that was sort of speaking to my first slide where I had the big red graph, and it sort of slowly went down. So, back in 2014, we had $1 billion. So, Lenny had that depiction of the balance sheet up there, and there's a cash composition there, so that would have been way significantly higher, and it went.
I'm just trying to get a better sense of how, where we're at today in comparison to where we were 10 years ago.
I think the biggest, we can get the exact numbers, but I think the biggest distinction is 10-
biggest distinction is ten years ago, we were not making sufficient pension contributions. That changed in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen, I believe, and so when we started making those full payments, our cash position, as well as our balance, looked a lot different. But I don't think it's, I don't want us to just be spitting out numbers without accuracy, so we can go back to that first slide. But if we want specifics about when it shifted, I can get you the exact dates. But we were not making our pension contributions, and that changed, and as a result, our financial situation changed drastically. We made a, I believe, a six hundred and fifty million dollar payment, and since then, we've been making somewhere around that amount. And of course, that took a lot of money out of operating dollars.
And that, that, that was the main factor.
That was the biggest factor, yes.
Yes, absolutely, I would a hundred percent agree. We had a large pension holiday, and that was right where we saw the end of it, and the line started to go negative. And then when we got pension reform, and we were able to institute a tax levy, and we put nine hundred million dollars on the table, we've slowly been, been climbing out of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I'm, yeah, because while, you know, this, we talked about before about, you know, you know, that's one of our biggest concerns, is that, you know, improving that reserve, because obviously it impacts the district in a positive sense, if we can improve that, and, and everything is projecting well, obviously, we save money when it comes to rating agencies, less money in terms of debt service. So I think many of our colleagues are, you know, really want to make sure that the district is, you know, we're staying, you know, responsible, and keeping it balanced in terms of making investments in our, in our families and our children, and at the same time, we have to be the fiscal stewards in making sure that, that, that the district is, you know, in a better shape than, when some of us leave the board, that, that we left in a better shape than we started with. And obviously, the hard work of CEO Jackson, and many of you have seen the dark days, and we want to commend, I want to commend you all on the, working hard, and just, we just want to make sure that we stay that steady course.
Right, well, we certainly appreciate your collaboration and your understanding of the situation, how important it is, and we'll work very hard to put, you know, real opportunities on the table that don't impact people and help keep us moving forward.
I just wanted to comment on one thing related to what the CEOs mentioned about pension, and how that impacts the district's finances. So prior to when we made that big pension contribution they're talking about, the, our funded ratio, or the pension funds funded ratio was high. And then when it started dropping, then your, the required contribution increases. So if you have very positive revenues with the pension assets that you invest, then that results in you having to pay less in terms of your contribution. But just this year, from last year to this year, because our returns on our investment, our pension investments, has not been what was anticipated, the pension board had to drop their assumed discount rate. So that's how much they expect that they will make over time. And that drop in their expected interest rate increased our liabilities by over seven hundred million dollars. So it's, so one of the things that, you know, we have to be concerned with, in addition to everything else we look at, is the, the type of return we're experiencing on our pension, because if the returns, and I know that's outside of what we do, and it's what the pension board does, but it's important, the types of returns they achieve affects whether our contributions are going to go up and down from year to year. And as the CEO mentioned, that paid a significant impact on us and our net cash position.
Well, Duane and I sit on the Chicago Teachers Pension Fund Board, so we have to deal with that directly.
Good morning, my name is Angie Jacob, and I'll be providing the internal audit update. Since the beginning of the school year, our team has completed thirty-eight school audits. Twenty-four of these are principal transition reviews, fourteen of those were full scope audits. These full scope audits also included testing over additional areas that include volunteer policy compliance. This was in response to one of the recommendations that was included in the Maggie Hicki report, and overall just enhances our testing over, ensuring that our students are safe while they're in our schools. We also began performing some testing around IT equipment, and some example of this is just ensuring that the machines at our schools are running with the current operating system, so that when IT pushes down any updates, those machines get that as well, as well as ensuring that they have current antivirus protection. We also test for requirements per our anti-bullying policy, and these include items such as timeliness and communications that's required to parents whenever an incident occurs at a school related to bullying. We've also updated our audit ratings, so you'll see on the table on the top right, before they used to be satisfactory, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. And what we noted was that the majority of our audits fell in that needs improvement category. So this provides a more even dispersment, and also gives a school a better idea of where they land in terms of the spectrum. As you'll know, where we see the audits with need significant improvement and unsatisfactory ratings, these are in PTRs, which is expected, and this, this, this review occurs in a period of transition for the administration, so we tend to see a lack of controls, or improper documentation, and approvals, et cetera. In terms of updates, our key updates for central office, we completed a review over travel and work-related expense review. We completed this three years ago, so we wanted to do a refresh of this area, so we reviewed it from the period of July first, two thousand and sixteen, to June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. And we performed analytical procedures just to test compliance against our policy and our manual and our standards that we have. What we noted overall was that there were several improvements in this area, based on several controls that were put in place by finance and the implementation of the school support center. So to give you some concrete examples, the school support center now reviews all of our school-based reimbursements, and central off, or finance reviews all of central office employee reimbursements. In terms of the management action plans that were put in place, finance has already implemented one of those, which is implementing a Oracle system application control with the help of ITS, and this will prevent a reimbursement transaction from going through the system if there's no supporting documentation attached to that transaction. In addition, other management action plans will be a collaboration of finance, the school support center, and procurement, and just to provide our schools with enhanced training and additional guidance, and the understanding of how they should be following the policy, what are some, some misses that we often see, and just better understanding of our requirements. A review that we have in progress is a student safety, sports, and PE review, and the objective of this was to assess our district policies in these areas, and just ensure that the safety of our students while they're performing and participating in these activities. So we've, to date, completed an extensive review of our internal CPS policies in areas that include sports administration, physical education, aquatics, facilities. And we then assessed our internal policies with other comparable school districts, with IHSA requirements, and federal and state regulations. And to finalize this review, we'll be performing on-school site visits to test against certain attributes that we pulled out from our policies and requirements, and just be able to inform additional opportunities where we can provide better district oversight over these areas. And that concludes my update. Do you have any questions?
I, I just want to review the process here very quickly.
Yep, sure.
For the benefit of, of the public. You conduct financial and program audits.
Right, correct.
And you determine the frequency of those audits. For example, you said that for one area, you hadn't done an audit in three years, and so you've done, is, is there a set policy on the frequency of audits, financial, is there a difference between the, the frequency of financial and program audits? And then how do you go about prioritizing your scheduling?
Prioritizing, yeah, sure. I think something that has really helped inform our audit plan, which we put together before each fiscal year, is our risk assessment and the results of our risk assessment. So it, at the end of two thousand and nineteen is when we presented our comprehensive risk assessment that we did district-wide, really focused on our mission and our functional areas as a district, so that called out some, some key areas to review. As you'll know, the student safety audit is something that is new, that I don't believe has been done before in terms of assessing our policies, but student safety is something that rose to the top in all of our discussions as a key risk that we want to make sure that we address. And travel was one that hadn't, had been previously done in that frequency, but there's no set guidelines or policies in terms of when we review certain areas, more so based on our risk, our current initiatives, as we, as the district continues to grow and take on new initiatives, there's new risks that come up and new areas that we might need to look into. But as you mentioned, the majority are either school-based audits, where we're looking at individual operations of finance, and just overall how they keep our students safe at the school level, and our department program audits.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you for this update. The school year twenty audits that you list, you said that there are thirty-eight, that's for the year so far, right?
Correct, yes.
How many do you expect for the whole year?
We expect to complete a hundred, so we're a little behind just because of some setbacks with losing some days with the strike, and then some testing that came up after, but we should be able to meet it, we're back on track.
Okay, and so that means that, oh, sorry, one other question. Do the school audits encompass charter and contract schools, or only district run schools?
At the moment, it's only district schools.
And so you're auditing about a hundred every year, between the full and the transition reviews? So we're checking in on about a fifth of the schools every year?
Yep, that's correct, yep.
And to President Delia's question, is there, you mentioned that it's based on the last time audited, is there some kind of firm deadline, that if they haven't been audited in four years or five years, then it's definitely up for audit this year?
Yeah, the goal that we started to meet at the, at the middle of last school year was every elementary school every six years, and high schools every three years. Something that we're working on, that we're, are almost on finalizing, is a risk assessment to select our schools based on risk, which is how we did it previously. We just wanted to do a little housekeeping on those schools that hadn't been visited in a while. What we noticed that the risk assessment was working, the majority of the full scopes that we have so far have been doing well, we haven't seen any on the, on the right side of the spectrum. So we'll be kicking that back up in early February, is when we'll select those schools based on risk. And the thought that I have is, with those analytics, where we selected those schools for risk, we could start performing some additional procedures district-wide, over like cash receipts or internal accounts. The information that we have in Oracle, we won't be able to test student safety, for example, since that would require our auditors being out on the field, but we could give them a little snapshot of this is how you're doing, and then get more district coverage.
And why is it that the target is twice as often for high schools?
They just have more transactions, there's more money being collected at the schools as well, and they tend to have like more activities as well.
My last question was just, when these audit reports are completed, who gets the results and to whom are they available?
Sure, so in the final distribution of our report is included the principal, as well as the network chief. Chief McDade is included on those, as well as the school support center, so that the financial advisor knows what the issues are that were identified at the school, to then further assist in their later visits. Something that we've included in fiscal year twenty, as part of our follow-up, that they've completed their management action plans, they'll also have to provide us with minutes of the LSC meetings, where they presented the audit report and the results, as well as their remediation plan for confirming that they've resolved the findings that were noted.
And so there's a proactive step to make sure that the principal shares the report with the LSC. Are the reports made public in any other way?
Not in any other way, they're just distributed to those individuals that I mentioned.
Okay, would that be a good idea, or not a good idea?
Taken out of context, I think it's important for the principal to have that narrative of what the specific findings were, of why they might have happened, it could have been transition, it could have been an error that was resolved after the fact. So I think it's definitely important to have some context around the findings, not necessarily just pick up a report and assume the worst situation there. So that's why we decided to go toward having the principal present at the LSC meeting, which I know we had talked about is a public forum, but at least they have the opportunity to say, these are the findings, and this is how we're fixing it.
Thank you.
And we are proceeding to do that.
Correct, yep. We've received a few confirmations already, so, yeah, we communicated it via the ONS communications.
Okay, very good, good.
Want to share appreciation for this really thoughtful, continuous improvement work, and really interested in the findings on the principal transition reviews, and why they're showing up with more significant challenges, and what proactive recommendations are being made. Could we see the reports that were shared?
Sure, yeah, yeah. And I would just say that for those principal transition reviews, it's a new principal that's come into the school and wants to see, pretty much just give me everything that I need to fix going forward, so which is-
What percentage, what percentage of new principals request an audit?
I'll have to get back to you on that exact number, but these twenty-four that we did do were upon request.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's now proceed with today's public comment segment. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of eight-thirty AM and nine AM this morning. And, Mr. President, we have no registered speakers for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting.
Okay. Board members, any comments or questions? Okay, if not, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, we will return for the board meeting at ten-thirty. See you then.